Should we get going? Good morning, everybody, to our Monday, November 21st, Des Moines City Council Workshop. I'm going to quickly turn it over to our manager on the Des Moines Water Works Park Planning Update.
Thank you, Mayor, county council members. And I'm going to turn it over to Randy Beavers from Water Works.
Yes, thank you, council members. We have, today, we want to just give you a brief summary of some planning work that we have in, underway for Water Works Park. We had an opportunity to partner with Iowa State University, and we have this morning, Ted Corrigan, our Director of Water Distribution and Grounds, to review kind of where we're at in this competition phase, so.
Ted?
Thank you, Randy. Good morning. I wanted to give you just a little bit of background on our park plan and tell you where we're at with it right now. We actually started talking about park planning for Des Moines Water Works Park two or three years ago. At the board level, there was some discussion and basically some concern about the fact that we did not have a master plan for Des Moines Water Works Park. And as people came to us and wanted to do things in the park, or whether we, when we needed to make enhancements or repairs, there really wasn't a plan that was guiding us through that process. And so, it started out just as an attempt to develop a master plan for the park that would help identify where things would go if they were donated, those kind of things. Initially, we drafted a request for proposals, a standard request for proposals that was going to go out to several design firms, asking for them to give us a proposal to do this master planning. During the review process of that request for proposals, we actually sent the document to Iowa State and asked them to take a look at it, given their expertise in the landscape architecture field. One of the professors there reviewed it for us, and he actually came back with this concept of, hey, you know, you should do a design competition. With Water Works Park being one of the largest urban parks in the United States, if not the largest, it could attract a lot of attention, a lot of interest, it could be a way to bring a focus on Des Moines and on Water Works Park, and it could be a great thing. In addition to which, they were willing to set up the competition for us. They actually had a fifth-year design class in landscape architecture, a studio where they do service learning projects, or actual projects in the community, at no cost to the community, try to make an actual contribution. And so, we partnered with them, and they set up the entire competition. Throughout the process, they developed a website with input from us and from our board in terms of the direction we wanted to go. They publicized it, they made it known to the architectural community, specifically the landscape architectural community, that this design competition was going to happen. And as it turned out, we ended up having 185 teams register to participate in the competition. So it was very successful and very popular, at least from a registration perspective. As we went through the process, we had two categories, student and professional. We ended up getting a total of 44 entries into the competition, 25 student and 19 professional. Now, the students, they're not eligible to win the competition, obviously, it was more of a, an opportunity for them to participate and to learn, but we did choose nine of those who will receive honorable mention and will be highlighted at the public forum that we're planning to have next month. And out of the four, or out of the 19 professionals, we had our jury meet, and we selected five finalists who will move on to the second stage of the competition. And then, I brought with me today a few examples, and this is more just as a, a way of showing the level of detail that we got in the original proposals. This is an example of one of the five finalists and the level of detail that they went into. We actually had two finalists who are coming to us from London, one from Alexandria, Virginia, one from New Orleans, Louisiana, and then a team of a competitor from Boston who has teamed with RDG here in Des Moines. And so, those are the five.
Have the London individuals teamed with anybody locally?
You know, as of last week, when they both actually visited, they had not, but they both intend to. I don't see that there's any way that they could do it from London without having some sort of team. One of the, the London competitors is actually an Iowa State grad who's from the Chicago area, and he's now has moved to London and works in London, but he's, went to Iowa State University, he's very familiar with the area and familiar with a lot of people who work here, so he's definitely planning. We did have a number, well, three of the five competitors. Those are some detail, actually, some detailed drawings from the second proposal that I was going to show you here. The overview here is on the next. We invited all the competitors to visit Water Works Park because not all of them had ever even been here during the week of November 7th, and three of them actually did come and visit. Two of them, the two from London, and then the RDG-Boston partnership, they visited that week. We have the fourth group coming today, actually, this afternoon, the ones from New Orleans are going to be here, and we're not sure that the Alexandria-Virginia group is going to make it to actually visit the park. So that's where we are. We've had, we've received these basic design concepts from them, we've narrowed it down based on these concepts, and then they have been asked to formalize their proposals and bring them to Des Moines in December. On the 15th of December, at the Des Moines Art Center, in the evening, there will be a public forum there where the public can come, view the boards, all of the student entrants into the competition will be represented there, or we hope they will, their boards will certainly be there, but it'll give the, the public an opportunity to take a look. And then, on the 16th of December, also at the Art Center, the five finalists will give their presentations to the jury members, and then sometime by the end of the year, we'll make a selection, with ultimately the plan being that the winner will negotiate a contract for master planning with the Water Works, for Water Works Park.
Anybody have any questions?
A question with the Don Tripp's group and Joe Galloway and our Parks and Rec Board, and they're working on the Greenways project throughout central Iowa. How's that going to interface with that?
You know, we're, we're certainly trying to coordinate our efforts with them, we've given them a presentation on the plan, and they're aware of it. Don is actually a member of our jury, so he's going to also help keep us all focused together, but this is certainly intended to be a part of that and function with it as we go forward.
Okay.
Has there been a list of the firms that the request was forwarded to? Have you kept that list?
We didn't actually forward the request to firms specifically, it was advertised in various journals and Alumni Association newsletters and those kind of things, and of course, on our website and on Iowa State's website, but it wasn't specifically forwarded to any specific firms.
Is it true that no firms out of Iowa responded?
Well, RDG, here in Des Moines, they're certainly in partnership with the Boston firm, but, and that's part of the, the challenge in answering that question, we don't know who all the firms had partnered with. The other four who are finalists, we're not aware that they partnered with anyone in Iowa yet, but we certainly expect that some of them will, but none of the finalists were, other than the RDG partnership, were Iowa firms.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Let's move on to the NFC Annual Update.
Good morning, everyone. I wanted to thank you for having Neighborhood Finance here today to give an update. I'm Holly Olson, I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Finance. There are 22 slides in front of you, I am not going to go through all of those during this presentation, but I am going to hit some of the highlights on some of the more pertinent slides, and then certainly take your questions throughout, or, you know, whatever points you want to bring up throughout, or at the end, please feel free to do so. So just to refresher in terms of what we are, we are a mortgage bank, and we lend money to people who are buying homes or are doing home improvements in our lending area, which is comprised of neighborhoods of Des Moines, including the low-income census tracts. We are also a not-for-profit, we are regulated by the Iowa Division of Banking, we also report our activities to the IRS to make sure that we are doing activities that are consistent with our nonprofit mission. So essentially, how it is that we lend money, what kind of, the quick nuts and bolts of our transactions, think of a tandem bicycle where the first rider, dressed in blue on your slide, is the loan that people get from us and repay to us. It is a regularly amortizing loan, it's not a trick thing with balloons or a weird rate or anything like that, it's just a plain, regular amortizing loan. The second rider on that tandem bicycle is the forgivable loan. Everybody always gets both when they come to Neighborhood Finance. That forgivable loan is funded with city and county money, and so, everybody always gets both a forgivable loan and an amortizing loan when they come to Neighborhood Finance. In terms of our underwriting, we really take a look at, we really try to structure our products in terms of transactions that would be sustainable, which would translate to being what would be something really good for the neighborhood. Yeah, people get really excited about buying a house, but if they got into a transaction that maybe two years in the future becomes unaffordable, that really is not something good for the neighborhood, because if they end up defaulting, moving out, then that property is going to deteriorate. Our mission is to revitalize neighborhoods, we accomplish it by lending, we lend to people of any income level, not just to low-income people. We are careful about our underwriting, our delinquency is typically at or below the national average, currently it's at approximately 4.6. We have very few homes in foreclosure, we have very few homes that we've actually gotten back through borrower default, and we have over 1,600 loans outstanding right now. In terms of how we're doing thus far in 2011, us, like many other lenders, it's been rather slow for home buying. We just finished a two-and-a-half-year period where there was a federal stimulus involved for first-time homebuyers, and also with the economy, we're getting a sense that there are some people who are few, fewer people that are really ready to take that plunge into home buying. But the one bright stat out of all this, I wanted to make sure that all of you knew, was that thus far this year, 49% of our first-time homebuyers have moved to Des Moines from outside the city. So we are really happy about the fact that while there is a limited number, a lot of people are coming from outside of Des Moines. That compares more favorably than what we saw during the past few years, when about 30% of our home, of our first-time homebuyers were coming from outside the city. So you might be curious as to where it is that folks are actually moving to, where we're, where we're actually producing loans. And consistent with the prior years, we have Merle Hay as being pretty strong. This year thus far, we've done more transactions than Drake. Union Park has always been a strong place where we've seen a lot of production, but as you can see, there's kind of a scattering throughout the city in terms of where we've been making loans. In terms of revenue generation, you know, yes, we do get money from the city and the county, and we use that for forgivable money, that would be down in the lending portion, but in terms of our operations, we are 92% self-supporting. We get fees from our lending program, whether it's, you know, interest and then servicing on loans that we've already closed. We do get grants for our homebuyer education, because we do not charge customers a fee, and so we get grants instead for the, for the customers of that program, and also our real estate development program, and I've got a few slides that show the success that we've been having there. In terms of our lending, we get investment commitments from local banks. Right now, we have a dozen banks that are working with us in our current offering. We also work directly with Fannie Mae, they've been buying approximately $5 million in loans from us every year, and we have every indication that they are going to be renewing that agreement sometime before the end of this calendar year. We also have received money in the past from the US Department of Treasury, we will be applying to them again this grant cycle that is due, I can't give you an update on that right now, because the application is not due until the beginning of January. We also get equity equivalent investments from banks, and we also get permanent capital from NeighborWorks America. So as you can see, we actually leverage the money that we get from the city and the county, it's at least $4 of private funding for every dollar from the city and county on purchase transactions, when people buy a home from us, it's typically eight private dollars for every $1. Currently, Pope County has committed $800,000 for three years, those three years would be 2011 through 2013. Each month, we reconcile the money that we get from you and the county to make sure that it is being used for the purposes spelled out in the agreement that we have. So none of it's used for operating, the money is all used for program, specifically forgivable loans, some other construction loans, and then loans for the loan-loss reserves that help to attract that private money. In terms of additional leveraging, we actually, we continue to look for dollar opportunities, provided that we're not going to get what in the nonprofit world they refer to as mission creep. Sometimes you might hear of organizations that will go out and try to chase after some money, and maybe it has nothing to do with what they're currently doing, but they think it's just such a great amount of money that they just cannot pass it up, and then they end up spiraling out into these unrelated programs in a few years into the future, people wonder why did they do that? We try to make sure that what we are applying for is a program that would currently be, would correlate with our mission, or would be very close to it, and perhaps should be something that we kind of stretch to. We have been, so to that end, in terms of NeighborWorks America, we get expendable money from them, we get permanent money that revolves that we use for our real estate development program or loans, and then the grants for homebuyer ed. The other thing that we are very proud of is that this year, earlier this year, we became the first non-depository community development and financial institution member of the Federal Home Loan Bank. We were the first ones here in Des Moines, I was informed by them that we were the sixth in the country. What that will do is that will enable us to apply for additional lending money, there are some grants that are available through them, but really, the main thing would be additional loan funds that we could use for a different program. We actually, I was asked to talk a little bit about the fact that in 2003, we became, 2002, then, then finishing the process in 2003, we became a member of the NeighborWorks America Network. What that has meant not only for us, but for the community, is that we actually added the homebuyer education program. We are currently the only ones in Des Moines that have HUD-certified teaching for onsite classes. We also added the tool lending library, we handled that for eight years, and then earlier this year, we transferred it to the Restore, where it's been a really good fit for the community. And then, since chartering, we actually have received more than $1 million of grant money towards our operations, again, that we've used for homebuyer ed, is that we would pair up when we were getting CDPG money and so on, and then also permanent capital funds. In terms of what we do regarding community support, I think the key here to remember for you is that we really work with the community, we don't work just in a vacuum. Recently, with the Capital Crossroads Plan, we're specifically mentioned in Section 1.1.3 about working in neighborhoods to improve the housing stock. As a result, we had Alex Perlstein from Market Street come to our board and make a presentation about Capital Crossroads to make sure that our folks were on board and knew of the different opportunities that we should be thinking of with that. And then, just a reminder in terms of what we done, what we have done regarding contributing back for flood buyout, whenever there's a home tour, Jazz in July Festival that a neighborhood wants a sponsorship, whatever, we are very happy to sponsor neighborhoods for that. You, you can't do just the bricks and sticks, you also have to look at what kinds of different things are you doing to help out with the social capital of those neighborhoods. Now I'm going to jump to our real estate development program. This is the same house, the white and red is the before, and the larger green photograph is after. This house is over on the east side, it's on East Dubuque, we're actually closing on it today with somebody who's going, who's buying it, and they're going to put a garage in the backyard. But this is one thing that we do in terms of, if we get back a house and redo it, or, as in the next slide, we go out and buy a house and then fix it up and then put it on the market. This too is the same house, we built a second floor on it, it's now a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath, with a laundry room on the second floor. And in addition to this house, which is over on East 40th Court, we've purchased another one just a few blocks up to try to really give some momentum for that block. And we also will soon be putting a house on the market over on Indianapolis, that when we bought it was a two-bedroom, we've converted it to a four-bedroom, it is wheelchair-accessible, and it has a three-car garage with a really big driveway. So it really will allow people to, you know, move in and have various support and have various family come, and it will also allow people to age in place if they so wish to do that. An important thing to remember is that since we do property rehab with every transaction, with rehab comes supplies as well as labor. And so, we use kind of a, typically contractors will not break out labor versus materials on invoices, but just kind of our own general knowledge of being in this business for so long, is that if you use the rough estimate of about half being materials and the remaining is labor, then since July of 2004, when we had a better accounting system to track this, we've been, we've had over $5 million in labor since July of '04, and however you want to slice that up in terms of number of hours or rate per hour, because you've got plumbers in there, you've got concrete workers and, you know, carpenters of various levels and so on, it still adds up to a lot of money towards the local labor market. With me today, we've got Joanne's here from Merle Hay, where we've seen a lot of success over the years, also Quint Boykin, who is our attorney, but is very supportive of us and really is engaged with our activity, how we structure our transactions, and really helped get us formed back prior to 1990, but still stays involved with us, and I know I've got some other folks coming too, but in any case, those of you who know me, you know I could talk about Neighborhood Finance all day, so I will stop talking now and, and answer whatever questions you have.
Anybody have any questions?
I might just add, I represent the city on Neighborhood Finance Board, and the city should be really proud of what NFC has done, because they are a model throughout the country, and there's a lot of envy as to how successful NFC has been and what can other communities do. The investment that the city makes is $1 million a year.
Correct, right.
And I know the issue is the 28E agreement is up in 2013.
Actually, yeah, the city's is up in 2012.
It's the county's 2013, so...
No, actually, the city's, the city's agreement expires this June 30th of 2012. So we're due to get one more million-dollar contribution within the next seven and a half months.
Okay. So I guess the question is, the 28E agreement, and how do we move forward, what would be the length of time, the dollar amount, and I think that the investment that we as a city make in Neighborhood Finance is probably at the top of my list for return on the investment and what it does in our neighborhoods.
Mrs. Henley, councilmembers, I'd simply say this, our intention is to recommend to you the extension of the million-dollar payments in your capital improvement program. You'll be taking that up here in the next couple of months or so, and that would be an appropriate time to think about the agreement extension. I think I understand the point, that you like to have some predictability be in in terms of those funds coming in, so we, from a staff perspective, we'd certainly be open to that if that was the council's desire, so we'll look to some, we'll look to you for some direction on that point, but we'd be very supportive of it.
Yeah, I actually did, to prepare for this morning, I actually, when I did a history of the terms of agreements that we have had with the city and the county over the years, and really, the term has been more of a five-year agreement, starting in 97, going from 97 to 2002, then from 2002 to '07, and then in 2008, there was a switch to three-year, but then with the buyout, then the city's agreement was extended through 2012. The county then has, is in their second three-year agreement with us, but I think, in terms, Rick, you're absolutely right, in terms of predictability, that is really important, not only just for the operations of Neighborhood Finance and how we can plan, but also when we go out to the banks that invest in our program, they always want to know, well, you know, how are these forgivable loans going to continue, you know, what about the loan-loss reserves, they want to make sure that, you know, that our mission's going to be fulfilled in terms of the neighborhood revitalization and the property improvements, which really cannot happen without the money that we get from the city and the county. Yes, you know, we certainly do try to find money from the CDFI Fund and NeighborWorks America and so on, but it really almost takes a patchwork anymore to really try to get everything to fit together.
Holly, let me ask you a couple of quick questions. What size of loans generally do you give out on, on new stuff, and then also for rehab? I mean, what's the high side, what's the low side, and what's the average?
The average during the past several years for a purchase has ranged, the borrowed portion has ranged between about $88,000 to approximately $92,000, and that has been accompanied by a subsidy ranging from approximately $11,800 to about $12,300.
Subsidy meaning what?
The subsidy's a forgivable loan, that'd be the second rider on that tandem bike.
Okey-dokey.
And then on a home improvement, the average amount borrowed is approximately, it's been right around $11,000 for the past few years, and that's been accompanied by a forgivable loan or subsidy of approximately $3,300.
Okay. Now, you had mentioned that you have private funding from banks, and then there's city and county participation. Generally, give us a feel for what's the balance between the city and county investment if we're the only governmental entities that are participating?
You would be the participating governmental entities for the forgivable loan, that second rider on the bike, and then we have, right now, we have 12 investors that have committed $8 million, and then plus Fannie Mae, and then they fund the loans that would be the first rider of that bicycle. So your actual leverage for the transaction is going to be on a purchase, you've got, you know, $12,000 versus like the, you know, 90-some thousand, and then on the, on the home improvement, you've got about $3,300 of the public city-county money versus the $11,000 and change of the private investor money.
Okay. And in terms of the private investors, are those banks or are those...
No, those are banks. I mean, we say private investors, but no, they have all been banks to this point. We typically have not gone after or not gone, we typically haven't sought out investors from individuals. Typically, the banks like to invest in us because they have to get Community Reinvestment Act credit, and they also will say that investing in us is the right thing to do, but typically, we've been able to get, you know, the number of banks that we need, actually, the offering that we're in now, we have the maximum number that our system can handle of 12 banks investing with us. So given that banks have to do this because their regulators are telling them, that we typically will, will ask, will approach them first.
And these are all local banks or national banks?
They, no, they all have locations here in Des Moines or the Des Moines area, I mean, there are community banks such as Community State and Bankers Trust, then you have the larger ones such as Wells Fargo, US Bank, et cetera.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? I want to acknowledge Quinton Boykin. Quint, you have been there since the beginning, have you not?
Yes, sir.
All right, I want to thank you very much for your service, and I know that all of us that sit up here appreciate very much the years of knowledge and service and keeping this organization together.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. It's probably one of the proudest things I've done in my career, is working on this endeavor. It's great for the community, and we look forward to keeping it going.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unless anybody has anything else, why don't we move ahead? Holly, thank you. And ERP, selection update.
Mayor, members of council, Alan McKinley, Deputy City Manager, a little over a year ago, probably about 14 months ago, the city began the process... A little over a year ago, probably about 14 months ago, the city began the process of an ERP replacement. It's a long process that we've obviously undertaken since we're at 14 months. I serve as project sponsor. We've been to council before you previously as a progress report was given to you regarding the RFP process. And today, we have Joel Biggie from Premise Consulting Group. He's spoken to you before, and the reason for the update today is that on tonight's council agenda will be a recommendation from the RFP selection committee for an ERP software system recommendation that will ultimately come back again to you in December with the after-contract negotiations. But we wanted to give you a progress report from our consultant.
Morning, everyone. Happy to be back here. It's a milestone day in the project, and I wanted to give you a quick update. Start with a couple of quick, the first couple of slides are just a quick update reminder of scope and where we've come, how far we've come, as Alan had indicated. Scope in a nutshell was to retire the city's 13-year-old aging legacy ERP system with a modern, fully-integrated, business-friendly ERP system. Specific to Premise, our scope was to conduct a ERP business case assessment, develop detailed business IT requirements, publish a comprehensive RFP document, conduct a collaborative evaluation and selection process, and then ultimately a, conduct a no-stone, unturned contract negotiations process. As Alan had indicated, our last update was approximately late February. One other point to mention here, Premise as a company, this is what we do. We are vendor-independent, so in other words, we have no horse in the race. Our only, our only process is that we want to facilitate the best process for our clients. So we have, we have no, again, no horse in the race for, we hold no vendor contracts. We are completely vendor-independent. Another reminder of the CDM ERP, functional scope, ERP at its core, finance and HR. Specific to finance, a few of the key items, things like general ledger and accounting and reporting, accounts payable, budget prep. On the HR side, you have items like personal administration, position management, and an important one to many of the employees here, payroll. Some of the objectives we defined during the business case, and there were eight of them, just to highlight through a couple, was to integrate systems, processes, and information across the city departments. Automate and streamline business processes to help eliminate a lot of duplicate and manual processes across these systems. Provide quick, easy, and accurate information, access to information. The IT, there was an IT assessment, a strategic plan conducted by Plant and Rand in late 2008 in that one of the recommendations in that report was to replace this aging application. Additionally, the SQL Server platform that the current system resides on will no longer be supported in 2014. The business case assessment that Premise conducted at the onset of this project also confirmed and validated this finding and recommendation. Incidentally, in that business case assessment report, if you take the inverse of this list, represents nearly an exact match of the eight key findings in that business case report. Quick recap of the milestone work completed to date. We started with current state workflow mapping, of which there was 148 pages worth of maps across the 24 core functional process areas. We then did our business case assessment report, and from there went into business and IT requirements development, of which there were thirty, a little over 3,800 requirements developed. Incidentally, between step three and step four is where we last presented, where I presented to you the update. We then published the RFP in early May. We held our pre-proposal conference, conducted our Q and A period. Proposals were due in July, and from there, we started our three-tier evaluation process, which I'll go into more detail in the next slide. Three-tier evaluation process, the, there was a, the CDM evaluation team consisted of nine senior staff members, of which I believe they are largely all here today, and I'm proud to be speaking on their behalf. The three-tier evaluation process ensures a thorough apples-to-apples evaluation and comparison, so in the end, the city can feel confident in its selection of the right product, solution, and vendor partner for many years to come. As you can see, just to highlight through the slide here, you have, there's three major areas in the evaluation. The written evaluation, which took four weeks of the five viable proposals submitted, after four weeks of written evaluation, the top four vendors advanced. We also did reference checks in between these two evaluation periods. The next evaluation period is vendor demonstration and product demonstration. Took six weeks, crossed four vendors, the top two advanced. The third tier is the Baffo period, which is best and final offer, and it took two weeks and essentially is designed to find tune price. We then conducted site visits, and number seven brings us to what we're here to do today. As you can see, the evaluation timeline is lengthy. Nine members have devoted, nine-member evaluation teams devoted a significant time and effort into this process has ultimately led to this recommendation. In other words, they did not arrive at this decision haphazardly. The team was diverse, they took their role very seriously, listened to each other's unique experience and system requirements, and they worked very well together. For me personally, it's a pleasure working with this team.
Joel, before you go on, could you have the evaluation team, just raise your hand so the council knows who you are? Okay, it's a group right in here. All right, thank you.
Lastly, pending your approval today, we will begin contract negotiations. We will be utilizing a Premise-supplied and Des Moines-approved sample contract as our contract template. I mention this because it's significant that our sample contract has been vetted and tailored over years of use in complex technical procurements just like this one, protect our clients in the long term. So how did the evaluation come out? Scoring summary of the three-tier evaluation process. A unanimous decision, the nine-member CDM evaluation team scored Tyler, number one in all four non-price point categories during all three evaluation tiers. If you look here, you have basically three information blocks that highlight the scoring summaries of each of the three evaluation tiers, from written to demo to Baffo. Non-price point categories, again, based on, I'm sorry, based on a thousand-point scale, 800 of the points, 800 of the 1,000 points were non-price point categories, 200 for price. Non-price point categories are things like functional requirements, those 3,800-plus requirements I mentioned before, technical design and approach, their implementation methodology and implementation approach, and of course, vendor qualifications. In the end, during Baffo, Tyler ranked 34% higher in all four non-price point categories of the 800 of 1,000 total points. So why Tyler? You'll have to excuse the eye chart here, I won't read it every line to you, but in preparing for this and working with the evaluation team, we felt it important to highlight a few of the key system strengths of the Tyler solution. Simply put, it was the best overall fit for the city. How do we, how did we arrive at that? During demos specifically, the vendors were required to demonstrate system functionality using a 20-page detailed scripts. All vendors had to follow that same script and that same functionality and highlight and show that same functionality. Of that 20-page script, we felt Tyler was the best overall fit for the city. To name a few, consistent and user-friendly chart of account structure, that is huge during implementation and for ongoing life, as far as like staff, staff training and implementation timeline. You have a lot of people that are going to be using the system, and a user-friendly chart of accounts that is familiar and consistent will shorten that timeline. They are the largest software company solely dedicated to the public sector. Federal reporting for multiple entities can be accommodated with no customizations. That's important in, I know the city actively pursues partnerships with, with county, with other entities like the airport authority. This would allow you, should you want to do joint effort and use, utilize an ERP system jointly, this would accommodate that without any customizations. Seamless integration of industry and city technical standards, it's a site license based on, not on the number of users, it's a site license, and it's fully auditable system.
Next slide.
Okay, project budget. This looks good as well. The best and final offer phase proved very useful, specifically with Tyler in fine-tuning and right sizing the project, down by nearly $1.6 million. Project, ERP project budget is in line as well at the $3.5 million that was budgeted, fully budgeted for this and fully funded for this. If you look at the top, the top block there, the project budget, the software license fees, professional fees largely represents all your external costs, meaning the Tyler costs in this case. Hardware costs are an external cost, but it was decided during the, during the Baffo process that the city would likely purchase this, leverage your purchasing power to purchase the hardware yourselves. Now, it is an external cost, but generally, cities and counties, public entities, you have a better negotiated rate with hardware vendors anyway, so you'll purchase it yourself.
Is that a number in addition to the 100? That is the 100,000, or that's, the city's assuming a liability more than that?
No, that is the total.
Okay.
Yeah. I just wanted to call it out separately, that it wasn't built into the, we obviously do have hardware needs, it's not part of the Tyler cost, but it is a project cost that was accounted for. And you have your project management budgets that we have allocated across the years one, two, and three, leading up to the, within the overall project budget of $3.5 million.
Now, if I recall, the blue letter indicated for tonight that we're actually approving 2.4, 2.7, is that, or 5, something like that? It's not the full 3.5. Is that correct?
That's correct. The 3.5 is the project budget. We're talking about just the contract that would involve Tyler, which would be the top, generally the top two items listed there.
Okay.
And through the contract negotiations, there are, if you will, ad alternates that the staff needs to decide, smaller ad alternates, that's why there's not a specific dollar map listed on tonight. We want to go through that process to make sure we get exactly what we're looking for.
So is there, I, you know, I recall when we did the People Software years ago, that we had individuals that took the lead on it and really became the experts, and then they left and went to work for PeopleSoft.
Oh.
Is that right, correct statement? I mean, there was, the individual left and became a consultant, I believe.
Yeah, not, not for PeopleSoft.
But a consultant working with PeopleSoft.
For a consultant, it was after implementation of PeopleSoft was completed. But the projected annual costs that are listed at $487 is intended to provide ongoing staff support for...
From Tyler?
No, this would be IT and department functional, that's subject matter experts. That's what SEME stands for at the very bottom row under staff support in parentheses. That means that there will be some significant training to provide and produce subject matter experts within appropriate departments so that they can understand and manage their particular area of the ERP system as well as ongoing IT staffing, both for hardware maintenance and software maintenance as well.
So are these individuals then actually consultants, or are they employees of the city?
Those will be down in the bottom. The software maintenance and support will be contracted with Tyler, and then the bottom number, the 206, represents in-house staff.
Okay.
So it's, the ongoing, the ongoing maintenance contract, just as you do when you buy software maintenance, that we do for many other systems, is the 224 number listed on the bottom.
Okay. And then how long do we anticipate this?
The implementation.
Not the implementation, but I mean, just this investment that we're making with Tyler.
Before we have to replace the system?
Yeah, before we have to replace it.
Gotcha. Okay. The system today, or the system, the Tyler system should, should easily set you up for a lifecycle for a solution like this. It can be, as long as you maintain your maintenance and support, keep upgrading, you know, along, and pay your maintenance support, keep upgrading with your license fees, you know, the system can last as long as, it should last longer than 13 years. I would say normal life expectancy is closer to 20, 25. So...
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions about price, and I can't quite tell after the third tier of review what, how Tyler compared in price to the others.
After, at Baffo?
Yeah.
Okay. Compared to in this case?
Actually, I can't really tell, but in others, you have, you know, their non-financial rank and then the overall, so you can kind of infer that after round one, they were more expensive and they kept getting a little bit better.
Yeah, which proved very valuable for Baffo, and it is one of the reasons we suggested doing Baffo, as I understand it, Baffo's, the Baffo phase is not something that's historically done or always done at the city. In this case, it's, it proved very valuable in that ERP systems are, if you recall back to the functional scope page, each of them represent modules of functionality within an ERP system and therefore pricing. You can turn that functionality on and off. So in a situation like this, where it's a very long procurement process and a very detailed, complex, module-based system, it proved very valuable that we were able to, you know, go through each module with each vendor and selectively pick and make sure that we understand exactly the type of functionality that we need and that they have. So it worked very well in that regard.
I think you're probably looking for some, some dollar figures or some, an idea about that.
Yeah, I mean, are we, is this the highest-priced one? I mean, I mean, given that we still dropped their price through the process, I just, I'd just like to know where it ranks and...
Right. Our analysis, when, just a couple of comments related to Tyler and then the other vendor, New World, that was number two in this process. The, the, there was about a half a million dollar difference between Tyler and New World in their fees, what their fees would have been to us. However, in the project budget, we would anticipate, we had anticipated based on their demonstrations and where, what we had seen in other cities, that we probably would have incurred another, at least another $300,000 of non-contract costs in order to implement the system appropriately under New World. So that half a million dollar differential was narrowed to $200,000 differential in the total project budget. Both would have been within the $3.5 million total project budget. I guess a couple of the other comments that I would have, the second-place vendor is a, is a strong vendor.
Is that New World?
That is New World. They are, we would certainly be, I think, safe to say, we would be their largest client if we were to go with New World easily. So they're trying to enter into the market of our size, we would be the, their biggest customer.
And how does that compare with Tyler, then?
The city of Des Moines or Tyler would be about a mid-tier-sized client, so you're right in the sweet spot for the type of client they're looking for.
I think they have, don't they have hundreds of clients?
Tyler?
Yeah, city government clients.
Yeah, they're solely dedicated to the public sector.
You'll hear discussions about tier one, tier two, tier three vendors. And so what I would say is that New World is certainly wanting to enter into the marketplace where the city of Des Moines sits, but it would be a pretty, it's, again, we would be their largest customer if, if we were to go the New World route. I guess a couple of other comments, through the demonstration process, the development of the RFP, beyond the nine individuals that were on the evaluation team, there were 70, 70 to 75 city employees that were involved in the process. So as we did demonstrations that lasted for weeks, we would have not only the evaluation team, but those who were going to be involved in using the ERP system, they would come, we would invite them to come for whatever portions of demonstrations that they thought would be the most informative for them. So there are literally hundreds, probably thousand, over 1,000 hours easily of staff time devoted to where we are today in making this presentation.
And I'm not, I'm not complaining about the price, I just want...
Absolutely.
...full disclosure. ...full disclosure, because I, it's a very good presentation, I'm happy about it, but I, I just couldn't tell, when we're making a financial decision tonight, is it three times the amount that second place was? So correct me if I'm wrong, but as I heard you, and I trust our team, that the bid plus anticipated extra cost, the 300,000 that you referenced, meant that there was kind of a little gap of $200,000, which would be 5% of the bid price at, at the most to get the product that universally everybody agreed with.
It's 5 or 6% of the project budget. It's probably a little bit higher percentage since the...
Oh, of the 2.6?
Yeah, because the project budget's 3.5 and then the non-contract.
So it might be 8% of, but, but that's, that's really, for the higher quality, we're talking about a number for sure less than 10% more.
Yes.
And that, that seems reasonable to me. I, I was just trying to put it in to some perspective.
Yeah, if, if I may, the raw, the raw cost for Tyler represented about 2.6 million, as the blue letters indicate. New World was approximately 2.1, so $500,000 delta on raw numbers. However, additional hardware and likely customizations that would be needed either from Tyler or to be internally built, we represent a little over $300,000. Actually, the final number, leaving the gap at around 100, Alan had said about 200, it's the, the actual number is around 177,000. After we, after you take into account the difference in functionality, the necessary functionality that would be needed in the Tyler system, excuse me, in the New World system, so additional customizations would be necessary and some additional hardware as well. So that gap closed from 500,000 down to actually 177,000 dollar gap.
And I, I think that's real, real good information, and I'm glad we had that. Hey, can I ask just one other company about, one other question about your firm? Have, have, in the, in the processes where you've been the consultant, what percentage of the time have you guys recommended at the end of a Tyler?
I, I don't want to, it'd be a ballpark of this, but in ERP systems, especially in this space, now, premise, the city of Des Moines is a typical client for us too, okay? We do tier twos, tier three type cities. Tyler, my guess, would probably be about 50%, maybe 60%. They have a good product. And again, I have to, want to watch my line here, because again, we're, premise is vendor independent, but based on the question you're, you're asking me here, 50 to 60% of the time. There are some good products out there. Because it is so complex and so many, so many different modules and different functionality that's needed from each city to city, county to county, 50 to 60% is actually, I consider a very good turn, a very good return rate, being that there are some good products out there.
I guess one other comment I wanted to make as it relates to your, your question, Chris, these evaluation scores are not premises. They are city staff. So premise provided us the framework and the guidance, but at the end of the day, they didn't say, you guys are way off and fix the scores and make it be this way. Premise said and asked questions and facilitated the process for us and with us, and at the end of the day, you know, the question really back to premise was from the staff, did, did we go astray in your, in your assessment of us through the evaluation process? And his answer, and he can come up and say, as I'm sure is, is, you know, absolutely not, he is in agreement with the process and the results of the evaluation committee and where they've ultimately arrived at today. And that was what we asked them to do for us, but not to be sitting as one of the evaluators and actually scoring the evaluation.
Alan, on the objectives page, I'm curious about this, it says that we don't want this to become obsolete, but I did hear life expectancy of 20 to 25 years, so we do expect it to be obsolete at some time. What I would like to know is, has anybody done a projection as to what it's going to cost to update this in, let's say, year 10 or year 15 to keep it operating?
You know, I think, and I'll have Joel step up if, if I lead you astray in some of the comments I make. The, the software and maintenance support number and what I, what we, the feedback that we got from Tyler, when we pay, pay that on an annual basis, we are buying all of their upgrades moving on to the future. And many software companies will do, and you probably see them in your, in your own home computer, you know, you get 1.1, 1.2, upgrade 1.3, but when they want to go to 2.0, all of a sudden you have to pay a bunch of extra money because now you've jumped to a new one. In the case of Tyler, that is not the case. You, when you buy their software and you're paying for their maintenance and support, any upgrade that they have moving into the future is paid for and supported by what we pay on an annual basis. Now, you know, technology changes over 25 years, platforms change as far as hardware or things of that nature, there, you know, there could be some, some costs related to that, you know, I can't foresee that far into the future. But that is something that's, that's a part of the software maintenance and support is no extra fee to do an upgrade five years from now or seven or 10.
If there's additional training needed as a result of the updates, is that additional cost or is that included in the updates?
Usually training, either CBT or a, some kind of instructor-led training is provided with maintenance and support.
Thank you.
And just to further the question about the, the life cycle of, of a application, be it 20, 25 years, in our industry, as fast as technology moves, you know, it's generally accepted, we don't, we don't know what 25, you know, years from now, technology's going to look like, just like with anything, you know, buying a car, if you go back 25 years, what cars look like, go back 25 years, what technology looked like, it's just too hard to estimate, so if you have to put a, a term on it, 20 to 25 seems reasonable. So that's where we come up with a, with a figure like that.
Anybody have anything else? All right, thank you very much, appreciate the presentation.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, Scott Sanders is going to do a, a budget update, but I had talked to some of you, I think I sent an email out about the hotel project, and if there's a few minutes at the end, Scott, no, you go ahead here, if there's a few minutes at the end after Scott's done, and if you're still interested in that, we've got a little handout here that we can walk through those numbers if you're going to do that, so.
Chuck, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. This is meant to be brief this morning, I just have three subtopics for you dealing with the budget. The first of which, we wanted to take time to review 2011 figures, those finished up in June. The audit is underway, in fact, we're in the final stages of the audit, so we do not have final numbers, otherwise I would have included those here, every opportunity to put numbers, but at this point, we're still finalizing those numbers. But we are far enough along that we needed to review the 11 numbers to see if there was any impact on what we're doing for projections moving forward, kind of a self-correction or a reconciling if needed. So looking at the major revenue side, the property taxes did come in lower for fiscal year 11, and there's several reasons for that, probably one of the largest of which would be the appeals that came in after our budget was established. And that is a challenge that we're, well, probably always going to have. Their process is such that they try and get the appeals done before the property taxpayer actually pays their bill. Well, that's 18 months after the value's established, and it's usually a year or more after we've established the budget, so that, that is something we will always struggle with. The road use taxes did come in a little bit higher, and I'll say that none of these numbers, except the very last one, the contingency, are very large numbers, and I'll get to that in a second here. But the road use taxes did come in a little bit higher, in fact, well, I guess I should say that one was closer to 400,000 higher, so that, that one was a fairly significant number. The franchise fees came in lower, that's about 150,000 lower, and then the hotel motel taxes came in a little bit higher. The expenditure side, the salaries and wages were well managed and came in lower than budget. The healthcare costs, the same. And then the contingency was, was barely even touched, and so that was nearly a half a million dollar lower than the budget was, was allowing for. So really what you see here in 2011 is good news. In total, we will be able to add to the general fund reserves. There is a goal of 10% of annual expenditures, and we're only, I think, about 7.5%, close to 8% at this point. So we're looking to be able to add at least 200,000 to the fund balance reserve, which is very positive news. This is though, as we look through each of these, the 2012 budget that's in place now, in fact, we're four or five months into it, does not need to be adjusted based on any of these numbers. Most of these trends were already anticipated, and it does not unfortunately impact the budget gap that we're looking for for 2013 and 14. But again, it's, it's positive news, we'll have final numbers here in a few weeks, so that the CAFR will be available probably early January in written form that we can get to you, but really it's, it's positive news. Any questions on the 2011?
Just to highlight a point that Scott said, the fact that we've ended FY11 with the ability to contribute another 200,000 or so into the general fund reserve is, is very good news.
Yeah.
Particularly in a year like we've had, with so many uncertainties out there in terms of cost of services and some of the things that we have to purchase, it's, it's really great news and a tribute frankly to the organization's ability to manage through fairly difficult times.
This will bring our reserve up to what dollar amount then?
13. Actually, probably closer to 15 million at that point.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, the second, Bob.
Can I just make one other comment, just to underscore your, you know, I think we all just shaking our boots when we see people talk about the mismanagement of the city and the huge financial, you know, hole that the city finds itself in. When we talk about that, we're usually talking about where we might be in a forecast, you know, 18 months, a couple of years from now, but just to underscore, even in this budget year, we're, we're operating ahead.
Yeah, and it's how you manage the budget, and so when we talk about funding gaps, which will be the next slide, that's if there's no activity, no, no management, if, if you were just to leave everything the same, obviously the situation gets worse. And so that's where the, the heavy lift with managing, asking for policy decisions on, on where cuts should be made, that, that's where the benefit would sit. And then has, we have a history that shows that, the 24 million in cuts that have already been made over the last five years. So it's, it's really how you manage it. You always have to have a starting point with any planning process, and, you know, rationally, the, the best starting point is what if we did nothing and left things as is? And so that's where you get, quite honestly, the large budgeting gaps. And, and I'll attest, in the experience I've had, that is not unusual for any city, and it is reflective on the Iowa property tax system. That's, it seems like every year you start behind the eight ball. That's, that's the way the system works unfortunately.
That 15 million in reserves sounds like a, like a large dollar amount, but it's a pretty small percentage of our total budget.
Absolutely.
Yes, again, we're under 8%. You know, ideally, and only in an ideal situation, you'd maybe want to have 20, 25%.
And Bob, thanks for making that point, because in, in the state of Iowa, you will find cities and counties that tend to have more robust revenue pictures with reserves that are significantly larger than Des Moines, and it tends to catch the attention of legislators. And so they'll look at cities and say, well, you've got all this cash line around. That is not the case for Des Moines. Our reserves have been modest at best, we've managed expenses, but they are, if anything, a bit below what the standard would be.
I, I think that's important to say because, especially our employees who we keep asking to do a lot more with less, and they hear that, you know, we're able to add money to our reserves, it would, it would, it would make me question, you know, how necessary cutbacks were if we can still put money into reserves. So I think it's always important when we talk about those reserves, you know, to talk about our bond rating, our ability to, you know, borrow money and do capital projects at a lower amount by managing ourselves responsibly, and that means adding to that number, not, not spending the reserves that we have.
I think you might also note that in the private sector, sometimes they'll have three to six to nine to 12 months worth of cash available for, to cover operations if worst-case scenario ever happens. That would be a huge number here, which would be more like, what would you say?
50%. Yeah, we...
You'd need to have, on the operations side, like 70 million.
Right.
And on, to have six months, and if you had to do it across the whole operation, you'd have to have 300 million.
And the other caveat there is those fund balances are not earning us a lot of interest.
Correct.
At least in, in better economic situations, you can feel good about, okay, at least getting some earnings there, but it's peanuts at this point, so not a lot of advantage to keep an extra. All right, so I think this is the side people were kind of wanting to see. The 7.7 figure on the budget gap has gotten better. We, last week, got the pension cost estimates, we sat down and went through the healthcare costs. First off, the healthcare costs, there's no change based on that estimate. We still feel pretty good about a zero rate increase for the employees in the sense that the single and family rates should remain almost exactly the same for fiscal year 13, and for fiscal year 14, that's the, we're still trying to figure out, that's a 6, 7% increase in the second year. So that is reflective on the change that you decided to go self-insured and how that was definitely a smart, smart move on the city's part. The pension cost, we did get the police and fire pension rate, the contribution rate established last week, that was better than expected due to a policy change at the board level. And so that did save us almost a million dollars in this two-year budget cycle, so it's a very significant number there. However, the property tax losses, as I mentioned in 2011, continue to be a strain on us, and I'll throw out another number for you, the appeals portion. So the county has looked at property tax values, and if there was a dispute at the county level, those have all been resolved or passed on to the state level. There is a state board that looks at valuations, appeals. There is over $200 million in valuations sitting at that board for Des Moines properties that are under dispute, and because of that, there is a risk that we will lose a significant portion of that valuation. The, the second item dealing with property taxes is our TIF ask is slightly higher, and because of the lower values, that meant there's less value to put back into operations within our TIF districts. That was somewhat expected, the final number, about 150,000 less than what I was hoping in my original numbers two months ago. And then actually, some, some of the last-minute changes on the actual property taxes were down slightly as well. It's, so it's about a half a million dollars lower than expected as far as the revenues from property taxes. So that's how we get a half a million dollar, a better number if you will, with the 7.2 as opposed to the 7.7 that we originally had.
Scott, going back on the property taxes, you said there are, I thought you said 200, about approximately 200 million that are in the appeals?
That's correct.
Is that primarily commercial?
It is.
Is it all commercial?
No. Well, actually, I can give you that.
Just an approximate, it's 75% commercial.
Oh, I'd say more than that. Just over 200 million of commercial alone, of commercial industrial alone, and only about 12, 13 million in residential.
Okay. And then the other thing is on tax exempt, you know, I, I continue to be concerned about, every time I drive around someplace, I see a new building or an expansion and it's tax exempt. I mean, do we know what the latest number is? I've heard 4... I've heard 40%, 45%, but do we have an update on that number?
Not an update for the January 11 numbers yet.
Okay.
That's usually one of the last things that get attended to, since they don't impact the rest of the process. But as far as 2010 numbers, we have a map that shows 40% of the land space, so acreage, space-wise, it is 40%. When you look at the estimated value, it's like half that, about 20% of the market value of the city is tax exempt. Now, you have to take that with a grain of salt, because they don't, the county assessors do not spend much time on being accurate on what the value of nonprofits are. Again, they don't have to in the process.
Well, I've always been a little frustrated, because we hear many different numbers depending on how you define it. So, it would be great if we could have one definition that we all use, because...
It is all over the place.
It is all over.
You guys, Chris, Brian's had his hand up here for about five minutes, and you guys keep talking.
Talk when it's not. No, a question I had was, most of the shortfall still, most of this gap is still in FY14. Is that correct?
Well...
I'm trying to break out in my mind, what's FY13, FY14? And so, the broader question is, is it possible, is it possible that things would pick up and we would see a smaller shortfall in FY14?
There's two questions there. The larger portion of the shortfall is actually in 13.
Okay.
Because those are the values from January 1 of 11 that they're in the final throes of. And it's a little over $5 million. In fact, it's probably right at $5 million at this point. And so, another 2.2 then is added on for the 14.
So, if things got worse than FY14, would be...
Well, and the reason, one of the reasons, and there's several, one of the reasons we like the two-year planning is because now the 2014 budget is based on January 112 values. And so, it's not too terribly difficult to look around the community and see that we're not going to have a windfall evaluation created in the next couple of weeks. So, that's why we feel comfortable that a two-year cycle gives us confidence that we can plan for that. So, you know, unless there's legislative changes, we actually, because of the rollback formula, feel pretty comfortable, we understand where that's at, again, without any legislative changes. The TIF, again, a big play, and the property taxes, we have an understanding of what that second-year commitment looks like. There's a lot of reasons why we feel pretty comfortable, 2014's not going to get a lot better.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything over here? All right, any other updates?
Just real quickly on the calendar, there was the discussion at our last budget discussion about possibly moving some of these dates. The first of which, you'll see, we're still, December 5th has not changed. That is the operating budget discussion with all the solutions to get us to a balanced budget. That is not a change there. On December 12th, however, we have thrown in more topics so that we can get the meeting with the public on the 5th, at least 10 days in advance of Christmas. And that was a suggestion, I believe, by Councilmember Hensley. And to address that, make sure that we get all topics addressed, I think the mayor was, had concern of having topics brought up after that public forum. So, we, on the 12th, will be prepared to talk about the enterprise funds. And so, and now, this will be at a high level in the sense that we won't have all detail, but we will have enough that you can get comfortable with. Okay, stormwater, obviously, there's a lot of projects going on, there will be pressure on rates for stormwater in the future. Where does parking, where does sanitary stand? We should have those answers for you on the 12th, so that you have that comfort level going out on the 15th and talking to the public about the operating budget and the impacts it will have. You'll see, there's plenty of opportunity then after the 15th with those open dates to cycle back if there is questions or concerns where we need more detail to be shared. I fully expect, I just can't tell you what topics those will be, but we will use some of those dates to review more of the budget items as necessary. Those are the only changes then on the meetings as we prescribed. Does that address the issues, Mayor, and I think that were brought up at the last discussion? Okay.
Thank you.
Rick, could we see, too, that that December 15th date is published and sent to all neighborhood and community organizations as soon as possible?
Mr. Moore, councilmembers, yes, we will. And we'll do a similar meeting announcement that we did for the first set of forums, which were fairly extensive. So, yeah, we'll follow up again and do that.
If I could, that 12th is not a council meeting, so that is a special Monday morning workshop, just to remind you.
And what time is the 15th meeting?
Have not been established.
I think...
Probably another evening one.
It's in, well...
6:30?
Actually, that's a great question, because I think in the very initial discussion about this, there was a suggestion about having one noon meeting. And so, there's an option to do it here at noon. I must say, I would not recommend that, because I think you want to make sure that you make it available to as many people as possible. I think the evening meetings maybe work a bit better there.
Suggestion, I think it would be good to have two meetings that day, one at lunch and one in the evening. Because I think you will pick up people over the lunch hour that would want to participate that maybe wouldn't, especially during the holiday. That's a week, you know, that gets to be pretty crazy, so...
Well, the last time we were before you, we had it, we had it the week of Christmas, and so, we've moved it back.
The 21st.
But we can certainly, I think that makes sense.
I mean, you know, having a lunch the same day, but do it at lunch and in the evening.
I think that...
It would be a shorter format over lunch.
Right, right.
I think it would be a longer format. Okay.
All right, thank you. And let's do a quick update on the waterfront lodging. There's been quite a bit of conversation going on out there in the social media area, and I think that it's important that we all get refocused and talk about the actual numbers. And, Mr. Manager, let's give the council...
First off, did you see the editorial on today's paper?
I did.
Yeah, it's great, isn't it?
Yeah, great. They kind of straightened out, if you think.
Yeah, it did.
By the way, Terry Vorbrook here in the audience today, and Alan McKinley and Rita Connor, who I don't think is here, all have worked very hard the last week or so putting numbers together. So, I'm going to try to summarize, though. If you've got specific questions about the project or the numbers, both Alan and Terry are going to be able to provide additional information. Just by way of a short background, at the last council meeting, you gave preliminary approval to a housing or a hotel project along Water Street south of Court. The project entailed two hotels, one built initially, the second built five years later, or at least within five years, and that also included a structured parking garage. So, there were, in effect, three buildings on the site. The basic economic development package is comprised of 75% of the TIF generated by the project for 15 years, so that would apply to the first hotel, and then it applies to the second hotel that would be constructed, and also applies to the parking garage. There is a $1.1 million grant that is provided for the first hotel. That grant is repaid by tax increment revenues generated by the project. And just a footnote, there is no tax abatement on the project. So, that means that those TIF revenues become available sooner, but there is no tax abatement. If you look down at the, sort of the bottom half of the page, what we've estimated here are the tax generation or the tax dollars that would result from the project. And just so we're all clear, TIF dollars are taxes that are generated by the added value resulting from the project. TIF dollars do not include taxes currently being paid. So, when we talk about the numbers here, we're talking about the numbers of tax dollars that are not being paid today, that are paid as a result of the project being constructed. So, really, the goal here in what we've tried to structure is to have a program which is based entirely on revenues that are generated by the project. And I think this proposal essentially does that. So, let's look at the numbers for a second.
And just to further explain and clarify, the base goes directly into the general fund.
The base, yes, Mr. Mayor, the base valuations and the base taxes, that is, the taxes being paid today, continue to be paid back to the taxing jurisdictions in the same manner that they are today. They're not captured by the TIF, if you will. So, all of these numbers are net of that, of the current taxes being paid. So, let's look at TIF tax generation. Hotel number one, now, this is the, again, we're talking about just the added taxes that are being paid. Hotel number one, over the 23-year period, about $5.5 million. Hotel number two, a little over $4 million. The garage pays about $1.5. So, the total TIF tax is paid over the 23 years is a little over $11 million. Now, let's take a look at what the TIF grants that would be paid back would amount to. For hotel number one, it's about $2.8 million. For hotel number two, about the same number. The parking garage is $1.1 million. So, the total grants paid out from those TIF dollars is $6.7 million. So, what's the net number? You simply subtract the grants paid out from the total TIF taxes paid, and you can see the net TIF tax generation over the 23-year period is $4.3 million.
Rick, I think that those are great numbers, but can I interrupt for just a second?
I don't think I have a choice on that, Mr. Coleman, so go right ahead.
This is like government speak, and I think what people have to understand is the net TIF tax generation is the profit the Des Moines taxpayers get off the project.
That's what I was going to say, too.
That there, what we're trying to do is generate more money that gets spread across all the current taxpayers, so they have to pay less in taxes. And this project produces a net gain, not a net loss. And that's, in the real world, you'd call that, is the city profiting or losing money off of this? And everything that I've read, they try and act like we're losing $5 million off this project, when in actuality, we're profiting from it.
You wouldn't have it if it wasn't there.
Right.
And what was, and the other thing, too, that we don't have any place in here, is what is the total development cost of the projects?
I think it's about $3 million.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Alan?
What is the cost?
30 million, 30 million.
32 million, okay.
32 million, I'm sorry. Just, let me go on, and we can come back in terms of how we can frame this. If you turn the page over, you'll see numbers on hotel motel tax generation. Again, this project, like any other hotel, would pay the 7% hotel motel tax. Hotel number one, the gross hotel motel tax paid over that period of time is 7.5 million. We've discounted that by 50%. Why do we do that? We're doing it because some will argue that all of the hotel motel tax revenue is not new, that some of it comes from other facilities, so we discounted it by a very healthy 50%. I'm fairly confident that's an overestimate of the amount of other revenue that's being discounted here. But nonetheless, we've used that just to be on the conservative side. So, that means if you use that assumption, hotel number one generates about $3.7 million of additional hotel motel tax. Hotel number two, about $2.4 million. So, the hotel motel tax generation, or if we want to call this profit, we can call that profit, $6.2 million over the 23-year period. So, taken together, the property tax and the hotel motel tax revenue is about $10.5 million over the 23-year period. That's net of all the taxes that you're, or the economic assistance you're providing, and it does not include the base valuations that are being paid today. So, let's look at a couple of other notes down at the bottom. If nothing happened to the property, and it just sat there as it was today, as it is today, over that same 23-year period, you would generate about $1.5 million in taxes. So, quite a difference between where it is today and what you're doing with this project. Point number two, I've already discussed, we've discounted the hotel motel tax revenues by 50%. There would be, as we often do in a project like this, a minimum assessment agreement. So, as we talk about the projection of future tax increment revenues, they are predicated on minimum assessment agreements, so you have some assurance that those taxes are actually going to be paid. And that's particularly important in a down economy to make sure that that happens, because this is a way to ensure that the revenues are there. And the last point, again, we've already made, that these numbers, all these numbers do not include the taxes being paid by the property today. So, that's a brief summary. Alan and Terry are both here and can answer more specific questions that you might have. And we have spreadsheets and details galore on how we calculated all this, but I think the numbers are pretty compelling.
I love this. This is very helpful. I appreciate it very much, because obviously, there's a lot of misinformation out there. But one other thing that we haven't calculated in here that will be significant is the actual economic impact, in addition to the taxes that we're talking about. Stop and think about the people that will be coming into the area, and if you figure out a calculator on that, which you don't have if it stays as a parking lot. I'm just thinking of Wicket, you know, and what's going on in the downtown area right now. You've got a new hotel that will have the ability to draw people into it. So, that whole other economic side is really significant. And maybe CBB can work with us to give us that number.
I think they could help and probably get us something, you know, today.
We could use, yeah.
And not to mention, in a tough economy, that $32 million of construction cost is all going to be, you know, people working and building, and...
Well, and they've agreed to hire locals, too.
That's right. You've asked them that. The one other piece that I've tried to make a note to people as I've written them, is there's this perception out there that we're making a deal with this national chain, you know, which is owned by the Hilton family and, you know, but the deal we have, that's just the brand that they represent. The deal we have is with an Iowa corporation from Burlington, right?
Correct.
Right.
And I think that that's really important, because we're not trying to, we're not trying to create a financial contract with the Hilton family that has gobs of money, but that's the impression that a lot of people have, that somehow we're brokering a deal with some huge national chain, when in fact, our deal is with a Iowa corporation that represents Hampton Inn, like Yonkers sells Levi's or other things. That's the brand that they have. And, but our deal is with the local corp, or the Iowa corporation, which I think is important as people look at this.
I think those are great points. And there's one other thing I want to mention, there's been a lot of discussion about why the city is taking this action, and I would just offer this to you, and that is that in the very initial stages of this project, the proposal was to build a very basic hotel, a very basic Hampton Hotel with a surface parking lot. And it's really through the efforts of the mayor and Mr. Coleman and Mrs. Hensley that the developer said, you know, or we said to the developer, you really need to build something that's more urban, more fitting of this particular site along the river, which is a great site and a prime site in downtown. And as a result of those discussions, the developer came back with an upgraded design on the hotel and with additional density on this particular property. And in return for that, the city provided the incentives we're talking about here. The incentives are really generated here for this project to provide for those upgrades, not only in the design and the materials used on the hotel, the look of it, but also the density of the overall site. In the long term, the taxpayer benefits from it and the downtown benefits from that action. If you hadn't done it, if you hadn't done it, you would have been left with a hotel there, but it would have been a hotel that wouldn't have fit in well with the downtown, in my view, would have been using surface parking spaces, which would have really never been developed, and you'd had a project that I just, I'm just convinced, would not have been well-received in the community.
And would have adversely affected property values around for the long term, if not the immediate term.
Mm-hmm. So, your motivation, in my view, behind doing what you're trying to do here, is all about trying to make a very basic project a much better project. And it's not only the quality of the project, but the scale of it. And I think your package that you've offered seeks to accomplish both of those objectives.
And one last item would be, this is also a template.
Yes.
That can be used for other development opportunities that might come forward for hotel types of projects in the downtown area.
That's really true. And the reason it's particularly true, in this day and age, we are not, I'm fond of saying, we're not cash-rich these days. Our tax increment revenue downtown has been reduced, and so, we're really left with looking essentially at tools that use self-generated revenues to provide incentives. That's what this model does for the most part. So, it is a model that we can replicate for other projects.
Could you also, quickly, Mr. Manager, I think that there's been sort of a sense that some... that some way, mean shape or form, there's zoning classifications down here, and, and we as a council have some way to control the type of use of property. Could you kind of address that? How is that, that done in downtown? How, while we anticipate commercial, residential, multiple kinds of uses, entertainment, cultural, how do, how do we control that or oversee that?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm sure Mike Ludwig or maybe Terry could give a more definitive answer, but I'll offer my perspective on it, and that is that, that the council's ability to control what happens on land downtown is really essentially through your zoning and whatever planning you happen to be doing. But zoning is really the enforcement tool you have. And in a downtown environment, it's not a restrictive kind of zoning. It allows for a whole variety of uses. And in this particular case, the zoning that's down here allows either housing or hotel or other kinds of commercial. The zoning is a sort of a blunt instrument, if you will. It doesn't, it doesn't allow you to control exactly what happens. You don't own this property. If you own the property, you could put development constraints on it, or you could be more judicious in terms of what happened there. That's not the case here. You have privately-owned property. You have, you have a developer who wants to build something. That privately-owned property owner and the developer could really build essentially what they wanted so long as they conform to the zoning, which, as I just said, is fairly broad. Now, in this particular location, it is on the river. There are some height restrictions. I think, I'm told it was 75 feet. Larry's nodding his head. This project will have to conform to those standards, and it will. But other than that, your ability to control what happens is really more in the nature of, of trying to promote or encourage different kinds of design or uses, which is exactly what you're doing with this package. But your ability to say, nothing's going to happen here, you simply can't do that. Your, your, your land use controls, if you will, are not of that nature, particularly when you don't own the property.
Thank you for the information.
Anything else?
I could say, Mayor, I know there, there may be some additional discussion at the council meeting tonight. If you'd like, we can probably do a little fancier version of this presentation. I know you've all heard it, but in terms of the public's consumption of it, you may want to do it again. Just let me know what your desire is on.
I think so.
And I think one of the other things, well, I think we've said it in so many ways, one of the concerns that I have, and I know it's shared by members of the council, is, you know, what's the quality of the projects? At the end of the day, if we have some ability to do something, and in this case, I think we've, we've upgraded the quality of this many steps over and above what was originally brought to us as, as a project on this particular piece of property. And certainly, I think that, again, protecting the property values of all those investors that have invested, whether in condominiums or other commercial property around, I think that, that we felt it was in the best interest of, of citizens of Des Moines, visitors, whether they're coming here for a convention or, or to see Wicked, that, that having a high-quality product is certainly much better in the long view than, than putting up the cheapest thing could possibly be allowed and moving forward with that. So appreciate everybody's thoughts on that. And I know that we'll continue to have discussions and with, with citizens about looking at zoning everywhere a little bit differently. But at the moment, I think that we're, we're dealing with the, with the situation as it is. So, yes. Anybody have anything else? Let's open for public comment. Anybody in the audience have anything to say this morning? Yes, ma'am?
Dave. We're just going to... Joanne Hanover with the Merle Hay neighborhood. If I sound shaky, it's because I'm sitting in a wind tunnel over there. And I even put my coat back on. I don't know where it's all coming from. At any rate...
Not the new windows.
No, I, I thought of that. I did. I'm here to say thank you to you, to the county, and to NFC for everything that's been an advantage to the Merle Hay neighborhood as of Friday, unless they approved something since then. We're just under $11 million.
Wow.
Through NFC for home improvements or for buying... See, I can't quit shaking. It has fallen in the last few months as far as the pace was concerned. So I'm going to have to think of some new ways to promote it and let people know that between you and the county, we have been extended for a year, which I really appreciate. So if anybody has any good ideas about how I can get more people involved...
City Source.
Yeah.
A story in City Source would, I think, be very helpful.
That would be nice.
Actually, I think it would be more helpful to put it in the West Des Moines newsletter and encourage people to move back to the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, exactly. I like that one, too. At any rate, I wanted to also mention that NFC has somebody attend every neighborhood meeting that we have. They're always right there, have all their information, and, and they have really done a good job. So that was just a quick thank you for including us and for giving us an extra year.
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone else? If not, we will look forward to seeing all of yous that are so inclined this evening. This meeting's adjourned.